Thank you.
And next.
Discussion item number two. Border line, boundary line changes, school of choice and boundary line exemptions in Dearborn High School addition. Don't go too far, Mr. Mashur.
Mr. Mashur, yeah, I don't know why he walked away.
That's what I was wondering.
He was just hoping to go.
He thought we wouldn't notice.
As everyone knows, this has been our hot topic for quite some time this school year. You know, we presented some, some boundary proposals earlier this, well, actually last year, but earlier this school year. And from that time, we went to, took those proposals to the community. We had ten forums at, you know, many of our middle schools and high schools. And in order, you know, for us to get information, gather information, see what the parents and the families in our communities were thinking. And so what we did with that information is we said, okay, well, let's kind of tweak what we did and so on, and try to figure out some solutions to our capacity issues that we are going to be facing. One of the issues that people seem to miss when it comes to the numbers is they're looking at the numbers as they exist today, not the numbers as they're going to look in, you know, five years, three years, two years, whatever. So, you know, when we do our projections, for example, Etzel Ford, right now, you know, we're under sixteen hundred, or about fifteen sixty, I believe, as far as fifteen sixty-four, something like that tomorrow, or Wednesday is our next count day. So we'll, we'll get our official number on Wednesday. But when we look at all the students projected to go into Etzel Ford, we're over sixteen hundred. We're almost sixteen eighty. So, which is good for Etzel Ford, but at the same time, those numbers are also increasing at Dearborn High and Fortson. So, again, we look at, I don't want to spend too much time on, on some of the past proposals, but, you know, this is where we are currently, as far as our boundaries go, as far as what schools go into which high schools, which middle schools feed into which high schools, and so on. And proposal one, if you remember, when proposal one, we were keeping Bryant and Smith. So, Smith students who were at Etzel Ford were going to be, all going to Dearborn High. A lot of objections to that one, so we made some changes. We'll go through some of those in a minute. And then, you know, again, the goal, Dearborn High, we want to try to keep it around nineteen hundred or below best we can. There's not too much more room for any expansion there. I know we're adding some classrooms, but it's, we're kind of hitting our, our, basically our point where we can't really do too much at Dearborn High. Fortson, we all know, is landlocked and has their issues as far as capacities go. Etzel Ford is really the school that we were looking to add students. Those are the current boundaries and the proposal one boundaries as far as visual maps. And I know I'm going through this quick, but I think everyone has seen this plenty of times, and including our community members and our parents and so on. All right, so we look at some new proposals, as I said, from the community forums. Proposal four. Proposal four isn't going to be popular with some people, just like proposal five, proposal three, proposal two, et cetera. People are going to object to different things. And I'll just explain the logic behind it. And just on, you know, as far as the board goes, I want you to look at the concept, and we could always change different things. We could always tweak things. So, what is the thought process behind proposal four? One of the things we came up with is we said, okay, now you still have your, you know, your schools that are going to pretty much feed into that particular high school. Bryant being one to feed into Dearborn High, Lori, for example, being one to feed into Fortson. So, what is the logic to moving UNIS? Well, this creates a very clean feeder system for our, our middle schools to our high schools. Rather than having students from four different schools at Dearborn High, now you'd have students from only two different schools. For Stout, you almost have to split Stout regardless of the situation, just because Stout feeds in students from the Maples area and then students from the Snowwoods area, this neighborhood in here. So that's pretty much your two populations at Stout. So Stout would remain split, Salina would all go to Etzel Ford, Smith would all go to Etzel Ford. The majority of Smith students currently go to Etzel Ford, so that would be, you know, a clean one there as well. And then Lori would all go to Fortson, Woodworth would all go to Fortson, which is currently pretty much what we have. And then half of Stout, who's been traditionally, not traditionally, but over the last fifteen years, I guess, since two thousand and two, the last boundary line changes, those Stout kids that are Maples kids technically, that Maple Stout kids, those students would go to Fortson as opposed to going to Dearborn High. They used to go to Fortson, and then when we made boundary changes in two thousand and two, they moved those students, that group of students, to Dearborn High. The, the other piece of logic behind that is, you know, you have students that attend UNIS that are all the way close to Warren, close to Tyreman, et cetera. So those students to walk to school to Fortson, which Fortson really can't be a busing school due to the fact that there's no place for the buses. We hardly have enough places for parking for students and staff, let alone to try to get buses in and out of Fortson in an efficient, in an efficient way. So, the other piece of logic was to say, okay, well, you can move, instead of transporting those Maple students from the east side to the west side, you would transport those UNIS students from the east side to the west side. Again, I know some people won't like that very much, but at the same time, there is not going to be a proposal that's going to please everybody. And it's one, one to think about. The numbers there, Fort, Dearborn High in this, this scenario is still high, not as high as it would be now because you're losing some of that Smith population. And then Etzel Ford is a little bit higher, which we need Etzel Ford to be a little bit higher. And Fortson is still going to be high, but again, it's a little bit lower than, than where it would be if we just kept things status quo. To give you an idea of what the boundary maps look like, that's kind of what they would look like. So the only little section that's kind of out would be the River Oaks section, the River Oaks Smith kids, because you have two different groups from River Oaks. You have River Oaks Smith and River Oaks Bryant. River Oaks Bryant would still go to Dearborn High, River Oaks Smith would go to Etzel Ford. And again, like I said, as far as feeder track goes, that's your cleanest model right there, your cleanest option. Proposal five.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
The numbers you're throwing out here, that's today's numbers?
No, these are the projected numbers for what?
What year?
What we're going to average roughly per?
Average, okay.
Per middle school, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for clearing.
No problem. All right, proposal five.
Abe?
Yes?
On the last proposal, why is it that the people, the students way up in the top corner have to be bused all the way to Etzel Ford? Why can't they, why can't they be included in Dearborn?
You can, but if you include them at Dearborn?
Yeah.
Your numbers at Dearborn would go up by a hundred and eighty. So your numbers at Dearborn High would go up by one eighty, so you're talking twenty-one eighty at Dearborn High, which is pretty much where we are now. And then your numbers at Etzel Ford would go down by a hundred and eighty. So now, can you do it? Yes, you can do it, and you can do it on the next one, too. I'll show you the next one. And then you're going to reduce Etzel Ford back down to seventeen hundred. So, but like I said, these are concepts, we can make changes. And I hate saying it like that because it's not just a numbers game, it's a people game, obviously. You know, we're talking about human beings, students, parents, et cetera. But proposal five, proposal five does the same, or I'm sorry. Proposal five doesn't have as many changes. Currently, you'd have the same Bryant kids, the same UNIS kids, the same Stout kids. What you would lose is that little section that Dr. Mead just talked about. You would lose that little section of Smith kids, and they would go to Etzel Ford. That brings your number at Dearborn High down to eighteen twenty. Etzel Ford would be a little over two thousand.
What's the map look like?
The map is going to have that same little section there, that little section in, in black.
That's what you're referring to as the River Oaks?
Correct.
Uh, Smith. And anything north of Ford Road is the River Oaks Bryant.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes, River Oaks north of Ford Road, yes.
Excepting the little?
Except that little section, right. Okay, so, again, this section here is, as far as the most consistency to what we have today, is probably this proposal here. There's not a lot of changes, but a few subtle changes that make, make a difference. You're also adding to Etzel Ford, you're adding the Woodworth population of two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, two hundred people, two hundred students, fifty students per year. And that's the section that's west of Greenfield, between Michigan Avenue and Ford Road. So that would be a new section, a new, you know, new group that would be going to Etzel Ford. And then obviously, you'd have the Smith kids, which you could, like I said, move those back to Dearborn, that hundred and eighty number. But again, now you're, now Dearborn High is going to be back up to two thousand. Etzel Ford is going to be back down to like nineteen hundred, a little, little less than nineteen hundred. So, but that's, that's another option. And again, like I said, I mean, there's no way to please everybody, you know. Woodworth parents, I remember that community forum talked about, hey, we're getting moved in all three options. So we're giving you an option, an option for the Woodworth students would not be moving. You know, and obviously, an option five. The only way you're going to reduce Fortson is to move some of those students out. There's no other way to reduce any school, really. You have to move somebody out. So you have to think about which section you would want to move.
Abe, in proposal five, you've got Stout going to all three high schools. Where are the eighty coming from?
Okay, those Stout eighty kids, students, it's what we have now. Right now Stout is divided into three.
Oh, there are some?
Yes, yeah. The Stout eighty that currently go to Fortson, and this proposal would stay at Fortson, are the ones that live right behind the bleachers. Williamson Court, they'd be east of Chase, and?
Okay, so there's, there are Maples?
Correct.
Doodles.
They would be Maple Elementary.
But they're on the other side of Chase, I got it, I got it.
Yep.
Okay. I didn't realize that they were?
Yeah, there's, it's a small group, but again, they're three blocks from the school.
Yeah.
It makes no sense to bust them.
No, it doesn't. Okay, all right, gotcha.
Okay, any other questions about five? Okay, again, we can alter Smith as far as the numbers go, as far as the River Oaks kids, the section that Dr. Mead referred to, or any other school for that matter. And just so everyone knows, busing would be pretty much a wash. You might add a couple buses, but looks like we might be adding five buses, or nine buses, rather. So, we would, you know, we would, it would be pretty much where we are now as far as how many buses are going to which school, which was a very pertinent, I guess, constructive criticism, which I appreciate very much, that we were given at the community forums, is we're going to make Etzel Ford an entirely busing school and some of those other proposals, which was a very, very valid point. All right, this sixth proposal looks at having Bryant with part of the Woodworth students. Again, the only way to alleviate Fortson is to take students out of Fortson. So you'd be taking a, a big chunk out of Fortson by taking the eight hundred and eighty. Again, Dearborn High is going to put you around two thousand there. And then Etzel Ford would have, and then the advantage, let me just backtrack a little, advantage to busing those Woodworth students as opposed to the UNIS students is it would be a little bit shorter of a drive from the, the Woodworth area to Dearborn High as opposed to the UNIS area to, to Dearborn High. Excuse me. Etzel Ford would have all the Smith kids, the Salina students, and then half of Stout, which they currently have, you know, as, as we have today. Fortson, you bring it down again, twenty-seven hundred. So, options four and six don't really change a whole lot as far as our numbers go at the schools. But again, they're just options from listening to people at the community forum and giving, you know, giving the board one more thing to think about, sorry. Option five is the only one that has, you know, a, a big change in the numbers. A significant change, especially for Dearborn High in the numbers and for Fortson as well. But like I said, every option can change. Thank you very much. I didn't even talk that much today, look at that. All right, so that's kind of what the maps would look like there for option six. And again, we have to always remember that we're still adding some of those classrooms and, you know, at Dearborn High. Okay, proposal seven. Proposal seven is another thing that came up at the community forums, something that we had talked about originally at the committee. But anyhow, the ninth grade academy. The ninth grade academy, you know, we have to think about it in many different ways. One of the things that we have to think about is how effective is a ninth grade academy? Is it something that's good for kids, is it good for students overall? Is, is it going to have programs that are going to be very, that are going to be vital and accommodate the majority of our students? Are they going to have, you know, good course offerings as far as electives and, and core classes as well? So there's a lot of things to think about with the ninth grade academy. But as far as this presentation goes, we're basically just going to look at how it would affect numbers. Okay, now, the, the ninth grade academy, again, you, you know, just depending on where, where, when we look at our need, where's our greatest need? Our greatest need, our greatest population is in the east side of the, the city. So, we, we look at Fortson. How can we alleviate Fortson's numbers? So we take away the freshman classes from Fortson. You take away the freshman class that comes in from Lori, Woodworth. You'd again, keep your Stout twenty that's already there. And you would take all your UNIS kids. So you had UNIS students that were going to Dearborn High. Now those, all those UNIS students would go to the ninth grade academy. And then all those students at the ninth grade academy, for consistency's sake and everything else, and just, you know, a sense of ownership, I guess, for students, they would move from the ninth grade academy to Fortson. So the ninth grade academy would only house Fortson students the way we have it presented here. You can't really take away all the Stout kids out of Dearborn High because if you did, then Dearborn High becomes a school of about thirteen hundred students. So, you keep the Stout ones. And then again, if you did take them out, then the ninth grade academy is going to be around nine hundred as opposed to seven seventy. Because you got to look at the math by year as opposed to over four years. And then what would you do with those Stout kids? If you were to take those Stout kids, for example, and say, well, we're going to keep them at, at Fortson as well, you're adding nine, you'll, you'll be adding a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twenty-five, rather, to, to your ninth grade academy number, so that puts you around nine hundred. And then you're going to add three hundred and seventy-five to your twenty-three twenty, you're, you're back up to twenty-seven hundred at Fortson. So, it makes the most sense, and I, again, have, make sure Dearborn High has a good population as well. You're looking at, you know, almost eighteen hundred students at Dearborn High, seventeen hundred at Etzel Ford, and then twenty-three hundred at Fortson as far as numbers go. Again, the ninth grade academy is, you know, it's a philosophy. You don't just want to say, well, we're going to build a school to house students to alleviate some of our over, you know, overcapacity numbers or, you know, our, our issues there. So you want to make sure that the school is a productive school and is good for kids at the same time, which, you know, I believe you, we can make it a school that's, that's good for students without, without question. And option seven. Option seven is a whole brand-new high school. Who wouldn't love that, right? I guess, I guess only the people paying for it would love it. But outside of that, it would be a beautiful thing to, there it is, proposal eight. So, I'm not sure if Tom wants to talk about numbers or anything, or if anyone has questions about numbers with regards to an entirely new high school, but, you know, we're, yes?
I would just add to that, that we're going to have numbers going to the board because it's TMP, Clark.
That's right.
We don't have them today.
That's right.
But TMP, Clark Construction are working on both of those for, and the board will get that prior to the, the study session. And then really, the study session is when you're going to get into, because we're going to have the consultants come. They're the experts, they're the ones that build the schools. We'll hear from them directly as to what the cost would be.
And that would be the cost for the ninth grade academy as well, as, as a new high school. But that's, that's proposal eight. Some people at the community forums suggested, hey, you know, our high schools are old as it is. You know, let's think about building a brand-new high school. So that's something, as again, we'll look into.
Can I make a comment on the ninth grade academy? If, as an option, if you see on slide, it says new or existing building. But I've cautioned our team about saying specific locations and things of that nature because obviously it can drive real estate values. So we're not going to comment on specific. We'll look to see what's out there in general, but we're not going to be discussing, you know, we can say it in terms of what do it cost to build a new one? You got to find the land versus if you did have an existing building. We're not saying there is or there isn't out there, but, you know, and we have some people that have been going and looking, but Mr. Wall and Mr. Gruzinski are going to look at existing buildings as well, just so that we have options.
And we will be sure that the cost of the land will be included in the cost of both the high school proposal and the, because I think people forget, they're looking at the cost of the building, but they forget that we have to purchase property as well. And we need to have that number included because I, and I don't know what real estate is going for right now. And potential demolition if we were to buy property that we had to work on or remediate in some way. So, will that be also included in the cost, or is TMP just doing strictly structure?
Well, my understanding is they can't per se, they can give you an estimate.
An estimate, right.
Because you don't know where the property is.
Right, where it's going to be.
So you really don't know the value. So they're, they'll give you a general estimate, but that cost could be a lot higher.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be a lot lower. It just depends on the value of that property.
Well, the only reason I'm saying it is because we found that out when we did McCullough UNIS. And that property ended up costing?
Sure.
A lot different than what was anticipated?
Okay.
When we bonded for the building.
Trustee Thor.
In addition to the numbers that they're going to give us as to what the cost would be, are they also going to give us a fair estimate of the timeline? Because we're, we've got?
Yes.
Population problems now, and none of these are going to be a turnkey solution for us.
Yes, absolutely. And that's something that we've been discussing with the team. And I think I've, you know, mentioned that you, you, there's some things that you could do short-term, and you could still have long-term options. I think, for example, the situation at Dearborn High, you know, as we've been moving forward with plans for the four classroom expansion, that would help, and the cafeteria, that'll help us short-term. And we can always use those rooms, we really can, even if you did go for a long-term solution with other ideas. So hopefully, I just want to remind the board that anything that we want to do short-term, which means for September, we have to decide by the March regu, not the March one study session, but by the March regular board meeting for the short-term. Because if we don't, we will not be able to move, we won't have classes ready. For, so that's just an important thing to, to mention. You might not have the, the full decision made by that time, but you might have some sort of direction of what we can do short-term. So that is definitely a good point on, you know, on all accounts.
I just wanted to add, and that's something, you know, that people that approached us at the community forums, you know, we need a new high school and so on, you made precisely the point. That's all fine and good, but that's four or five years down the road. So, that's assuming you agree on a, a property and, and are able to fund it and so on in a relatively short amount of time.
So also then, when we have this conversation, March first, if we were to have even conversation about a short-term, long-term approach, we have to have some flexibility built into it as well, I'm going to assume. Because if we do a short-term approach to take care of the problem for the next one, two, three, four, or five years, and then what, we, we come up with a bigger solution that's long-term, are we going to flip everything back? And how, how is that going to look? I, I, I think we need to have that conversation as well. Because if, if we were to short-term do some boundary shifting in order to get us through the next few years, and then come up with a different scenario of another building to move students into, then we're going to shift boundaries again four or five years down the road. I mean, the parents need to understand that this could be another upheaval again as to their students. So?
Yeah, it's a very good point. So here's what I would say is that with the short-term solution, obviously we want to make it least disruptive, but let's just say hypothetically that we'd, short-term, and let's just say that we went for a high school. Let's just say, not saying that that's been decided because obviously there's a lot to do. You're going to probably look at, look at the highest number of boundary changes with a fourth high school, because just do the math. So you would obviously want, not want, want to mitigate that. So you'd be, you, you want to be respectful to those families that have moved once and again. So you want to try to watch that, and you try to work around that. But again, where do you get the property? So there's a lot of unknown factors. And I think you've mentioned to me, trustee Petlicov, just about like, we know some have moved in the last one, so we want to be careful with moving people around.
Right.
And I think other trustees have said, these are people's livelihoods. So we got to be careful of that, that we're not just continually shifting.
That's what I want to avoid, yes.
And so these are very complicated. But a fourth high school would, the reality of a fourth high school is you'd be looking, if you just do, and again, it doesn't mean it's going to fit perfectly, but if you just do the math with the number of students in our high schools and you divide it by four rather than three, you're looking at potentially a thousand or more students leaving Fortson, potentially. Again, you might not cut it that way exactly, but if you just did a rough average, that's, you know, because obviously, and again, how many students do you want in a fourth high school? And that's what TMP will present, if, if in fact it was. Now, a ninth grade academy would be a little different. Abe kind of has the plan outlined that was discussed with the team. So that might be different circumstances with the ninth grade academy. It might not be as big of a shift. Having said that, if it's another property, being cognizant of the fact that students would then be shifting from three schools within three years, middle, nine, high school.
Correct.
Now, not saying that you can't do that, just that that's a factor to consider.
Absolutely, there's a lot of factors to consider.
Yeah, so we're going to get into that on March one, research. There's some good research on ninth grade, there's other factors. We have some of the academies within schools, too, that we're already doing at Dearborn High and Etzel. So it's a, you know, I want to tell you one thing in, in the community, and I respect the board. These are tough decisions, that's what I've said. I mean, we're making these decisions for the benefit of the students, but there's no perfect solution. And I can tell you, I have had community members that did appreciate the fact that you are all going out in the community. You've been at the forums, we're listening. I think I've been getting some of that feedback at some of the chatting events and whatnot that they appreciate. And I could tell you, all these proposals right now, they might not be one person's exact idea, but what we did is we tried to take the community input and try to come up with different options. So, one person that commented didn't necessarily get their exact plan, but just like when they go through a hiring process, you get input into the process, but doesn't mean you necessarily get your exact plan. Because ultimately, it'll be us recommending and the board making the decision.
Trustee Thor.
You mentioned a few different times, Abe, the feeder model.
Yes.
And when I'm looking at the maps, I can understand the idea that you want to keep the feeder models together, but I'm also seeing students that are getting bused by one high school on their way to another high school. And it's a tough trade-off to say that we're, we're trying to keep it the same going all the way through, but there's busing going past everywhere now with, with two of these three new proposals. So are the executive directors cognizant of that one and thinking, you know what? Maybe we're not going to be able to keep this as clean as we would hope to?
Yeah, of course, you know. Okay, with, right now, again, with the Maple students who live right next to Fortson and are still getting bused to Dearborn High. So we're doing that currently. So it's really not changing a lot, it's just changing who's getting bused as opposed to, you know, are you busing, you're busing students from the east end to the west end? You know, that's just the reality because of, because of our population numbers and so on. So, you know, Smith, currently right now, we're busing some of those River Oaks kids from the River Oaks area to Smith, and they go right past Bryant.
Right.
Now, why is that? Well Bryant, you know, is at capacity. And right now, it's actually overcapacity by a little bit. And we put an addition on Bryant, as you know, a couple of years ago. So, you're always going to have that dilemma just because of where the, the high population pockets are. So we're going to have that dilemma as far as moving kids, you know, past one high school to another. You know, one of the comments made at one of the community forums was the Salina students, you know, taking them to Fortson. Well, there's a couple of issues with that. Number one, the busing issue at Fortson. Number two, the Salina students, you know, the, the other thing is the numbers at Fortson, and then the Salina students as well. You know, yes, it's, as far as mileage goes, it is double. But as far as minutes goes, it's about two minutes more, you know, for them to go from Salina to Etzel Ford as opposed to Salina to, to Fortson. So, you know, again, it's, we didn't, honestly, when we came up with the proposals and came up with some of the ideas when we met as a committee, we were open to everything. We talked about a new high school at the time, we talked about a ninth grade academy, we talked about, you know, busing and so on. And we were trying to reduce busing, then we realized the harsh reality that that's not something that we can do. There's no way for us to reduce busing. So, you know, when we went to the community forums, we were very open to listening to many people's ideas. A gentleman, and I wish I'd have brought the email with me so I could have said his name, but, you know, he emailed and just had a very, very comprehensive plan as to how to move students and keeping in mind demographics. So our schools still maintain that good diversity that they have now, especially Etzel Ford and Dearborn High. And, you know, made a lot of very good points, and we implemented a lot of what he said, actually, in, in one of our proposals. So we tried to keep that in mind as well. I mean, there were a lot of very, very good ideas out there, and we just hope, like Dr. Maleko said, that, you know, it's kind of like when you go into the, the interview process. We listen to all the different groups, but at the end of the day, you know, the staff may have picked this person, person A, as their number one candidate, but the parents may have picked person B as the number one candidate. You got to pick one, you know, it gets time to, to pick one or the other.
Trustee Lane.
Since Mr. Andrews is here, I would like to ask, I, I was bused to high school, and I'm still here. I survived it, as a matter of fact, it was, it was okay.
Glad you did.
It was pretty good, yeah. But what, what is our average bus ride for high school? And then what is our, what are our outliers? What are our extremes? I mean, are we talking about plus, what, what's the usual bus ride for a high school? Farthest and closest?
The closest would probably be about fifteen minutes. And when, when I time this, I'm saying when the bus departs school and drops the student off. So there's days where the bus might get delayed at the school a little bit. I'm not considering those, those factors.
Right, right, right.
So, the longest on a good day, clear day, not, not a day like today. But on a clear day, twenty-five minutes would be the longest. So we're looking at a fifteen-minute to a twenty-five-minute window.
So that would be twenty-five minutes for, until the last student gets dropped?
Correct.
Yeah, the last bus stop.
Yeah. Yeah, we did a survey, um, and we were right in there on the average. There were some school districts, and now granted, these are more in the rural area, but that's really not that far from us, Plymouth. Um, and Mr. Wall could probably, uh, because he worked for some of those districts, could name a few for us. But, uh, there are some districts that has, uh, high school students on the buses for an hour to an hour and twenty minutes. Um, but most of them averaged about thirty minutes, and I would say we average about, I would say conservatively twenty-five minutes, so we were just below average in the survey.
Well, I mean, you have to look at it as, i- it's a sacrifice that people make for a good education.
Absolutely.
And I think most of our people understand that they want, and most people came here for the best, and they're in Dearborn for the best possible education for their student. And if that means a fifteen-minute bus ride twice a day is part of it, I think most people will understand it's in the best interest of the student.
And for the students who are walking, I walked to high school back and forth and I lived over a mile away. Took me that long to walk back and forth in all kinds of weather, so you get, it's a, there's, you know, you get the trade-off. Would you rather sit on a bus for fifteen minutes or walk for a mile? I mean, it's, you know, everybody has something when, you know, that, that they can view as a negative or a positive, depending on wh- what side of the fence they're sitting on.
Right, a- and even for the families that we don't transport by bus, you would see a lot of those families transport by vehicle to school today.
Trustee Barry.
Mr. Shur, you made a valid point about the ninth grade academy. When you said, are we just trying to solve a problem temporary, and what kind of experience are they going to have for the ninth graders? I can share with you that one of our commuting members, John Roslowsky, most of us know John, grew up at Bristol, Connecticut. And imagine that, they had problems, growing pains back in the fifties. Sorry, John, I just gave up his age, but, uh, that's exactly what they did, they had one high school, when it was over capacity, they called it a freshman building.
Right.
Bristol High School freshman building, they didn't call it. Then, I think about seven, eight years later, they went to two high schools. But he also started doing some research for us, and there are districts in the country where, for whatever reason, created this freshman building and realized that those students that had that experience in the freshman building away from all that, you know, everything going on in our high schools, large high schools, excelled and were more successful, so they kept that philosophy. You mentioned the word philosophy, so that could be.
There, you're, you're absolutely right, there's, uh, there are some schools in Texas, I know specific districts in Texas, and Florida as well. And they have, they've had great success with applying the freshman academy. One of the main factors, that's why I mentioned what I did today, and I, like I said, this is, that's a much longer discussion, but one of the main factors is that those students feed into the same high school.
Yes.
You don't want the students from the freshman academy to then leave the freshman academy and go, some go to Dearborn, some go to Etzel, and some go to Fortson. Then you'd, then you're not going to have a lot of success. But in cases of, uh, truancy, uh, in cases of overall achievement and so on, they're curtailed much better at the, as, when they're in a ninth grade academy.
So I'm, I'm imagining those thirteen and fourteen-year-old young boys and girls
Yep.
in this academy, I mean, on their own, just, just, that's just like a great start for them compared to, you know, walking to Fortson or, you know, Dearborn High, and they're just like completely lost for half the first semester, so, just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll get more information, I'll get more information for you on that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Trustee Hamud.
And I appreciate this discussion, because those were some of my concerns as well, and I spoke to Abe about this today. And my main thing is, I don't want to make decisions based on logistical reasons, based on numbers. I don't want this process to be, where do we warehouse our children so we have more room in our high schools? And we have to keep that, I think, at the forefront of our decision-making process when we're making these decisions. Uh, if we are going to make a decision here, I want to know, and hopefully, that could be, that is going to be part of, um, the study session is, how is it in the best educational interest of the student? How is it going to further their education? And that is how I'm going to make my decision. But, you know, I cannot make my decision not knowing the reasons. Because then to me, it really does become about warehousing our kids.
Right.
And that's something that, you know, I, I personally cannot stand for. And another thing to keep in mind is equity to me. And, you know, if there are good opportunities, that there be good opportunities all across the district. Or if there's something bad, that, you know, i- in this specific case, we're looking at the east end kids. If there is not good research, then we have to, we're looking at maybe segregating just the east end kids. And that is something that, to me, is also at the forefront of my thinking. And that all goes back to equity and what is in the best educational interest of our students, not just logistics, but something that is backed by educational, you know, uh, stats and data i- is what I'm looking for.
That was the whole basis of Brown versus Board of Education.
Absolutely.
Trustee Petlicov.
I think, um, for the March first meeting, we should all come in with a set of priorities. What, what's our one, two, three priorities of, of, of what's most important? Our neighborhood schools most important, our, our, is balancing the, the student population the most important? Is the educational experience most important? And where do they rank, so that we all are talking about, when we're giving our opinions about what, what we're looking at, we can kind of come to an understanding of why, of why you are most interested in this solution as opposed to somebody else most interested in a different solution, you know, what's, what's financially reasonable and feasible. You know, all those things are priorities that we all have one, two, and three ranked in our head. I think that maybe we ought to be clear with ourselves as to what direction we want to go in, and then that can help us, um, when we explain to each other, when we start having this discussion again, as to why we're preferencing one, one direction or another.
Yep.
Trustee Lane.
A good point.
I think, uh, Dr. Maleko has us set up with a training session
Right.
so that we can, it will have, or some guidance on making the best decision out of this, which I assume is going to be partly philosophy, partly, uh, data-driven, I would assume as well, so.
And we'll, our, our team will come up with, uh, pros and cons for you to the different proposals, so you can understand where our logic is coming from as well.
Abe, is there any, uh, research on this redistricting across the country?
Research in, as far as what, ninth grade academies, there's a ton.
We're not the only district that has gone through this.
No, oh, no, no, I mean.
So are there other districts that have gone through this that would be somewhat of a guide for us?
Absolutely, absolutely, like I mentioned, some of the school districts in Texas, we're going through some of the same issues that we are. And, you know, they, they rezoned, uh, students, some of them used the, uh, the temporary classrooms, uh, which we don't want to use, the portable classrooms, if you will.
But did that research show?
And then some of them built ninth grade academies.
Did the research show, like, what's the philosophy, what's the?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, you know, I have, I have a lot of research on all of that, so I'll be more than happy to share, you know, every, everything that people did, the rates of success, like I have mentioned truancy, because that's, you know, something that's a very difficult thing to, uh, to take on as far as a school district goes. And, you know, we're continually battling with truant students in high school, and, and you know, if they're truant in ninth grade, it comes very difficult to get them, you know, the help and support that they need to graduate on time, so, um, you know, to, you know, h- hope that they're going to be successful. So that's another thing that's, uh, that's part of the, uh, you know, the, the research that, that's been, you know, that, or, I'm sorry, not the research, but the practices that have taken place, you know, with the ninth grade academy, like, uh, you know, Trustee Barry had mentioned.
It just seems like there ought to be some guidance.
Oh, there is, they also talk about the importance of building a beautiful fieldhouse at Etzel Ford too, and some of those things, so.
Uh, I will tell you, I, I, they're all good ideas, but, uh, what gives me heartburn is, uh, there's no way we're going to get around trying to figure out, we have small groups of, of students that are, our district is an odd figure, and we're going to have these pockets of students that, I, I don't want to see the Smith River Oaks kids going into a big school and they're the only ones there. They, they've been with the rest of the Smith kids, and now all of a sudden they're at a two-thousand kid Dearborn High, and they don't know. So we'll have issues of small groups, and then we have to decide based on what's best for the majority. So the, the common good versus the individual problems and the individual, um, challenges, that's, that's what really gives me the heartburn. How, how to, how to not impact and be fair, so. I'll bet there's research that says that school boards hate redistricting with, with one hundred percent certainty.
And superintendents.
And superintendents as well, mhm.
All right, we'll wait till the March first, uh, study session then.
Thank you, Abe.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Our last report, uh, first review of the budget, twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Good evening, last one of the day, so you guys are almost there to the end. And you know my reports are always so long and detailed. Um, I, but I think you guys are on the right path, it's, it's not necessarily looking at all the, the, the variables in the decision-making, it's what's best for kids. And when we talk about the finance for the whole restructuring, again, don't focus on that, it's what's best for kids. Is it, you know, your values of transportation, is it values of staying with the community? Those are the things that's going to be a hard decision, because you can't make it on, to make it happy for everybody. And the training that you go through is looking at a balanced decision, of looking at all the different factors and making a balanced decision, that at least you have data provided, how you got to the decision, because you're not going to make everybody happy. And so you'll, I, hopefully you'll get something out of that training session that when we meet again on March first, you can kind of bring it all together.
Good.
Now, the budget, at least it's good news, um, you know, we're, we're a healthy district right now, we're doing well, we're growing. Uh, we're adding programs back, we're doing more infrastructure changes. So I'll quickly go through this for you, and feel free to stop me as we go along. Again, always having the, the mission statement in the forefront of why we're doing this. The budget's, you know, built on students and our strategic plan of how we spend our money, and the focus has been keeping it in the classroom as much as possible. So just kind of give you a quick overview of all the funds. As you can see, there's different categories or buckets of money, as we call them, and they're restricted on their purpose. Whatever is not restricted falls in the general fund, and that's mostly where our operational happens. We have eight operational funds, so that's the ones we actually do budgets for. We have a lot of responsibility centers, well, if you look at the total, we'll look at later, you know, when you look at our total district, it's, it's around three hundred million dollars we have for our entire district. You can't make decisions on a macro level, you also have to look at the micro level. So we do break it down, our responsibility centers, so we have different divisions, and you kind of aggregate all that data together to get to a bigger picture. Looking at our student counts, again, that's one of our major factors, our student count. We estimated roughly about twenty one thousand twenty-eight FTEs, that's a little different than actual head counts. And we actually came in at twenty thousand eight eighty-five, so it's roughly about a hundred and thirty-three student shortfall from what we expected. But again, we grew, and that was a good thing, and we based our budget on it, we had to modify our budget slightly. But we had a lot of things that came into play that helped offset our shortcomings. So looking at our staffing hires, uh, if you remember our budget process, we had the most likely, best case and worst case scenarios. Under our most likely cases, what we adopted, we had roughly forty-three and a half additional positions that we're going to add this year. Uh, well, as you can see, we grew, um, we had some enhancement money that we were able to take advantage of. We had at-risk money this year, which was new, so we got to add more staff than what we budgeted originally. However, the HR department was awfully busy at the last year, they had a two-hundred-and-fifteen intakes. Now, what intakes means is it could be a new hire, you know, a resignation, a retirement. So they had two-hundred-and-fifteen just instructional people that they hired this school year. And I think, uh, Dr. Maleko was saying that's probably the most we've had in, in quite some time. So that's good, that means we have a lot of new people in our district, but we also have a lot of new people, so training's going to be an aspect, you know, Title II money is going to be used for training. And, you know, I think we have a good program here of new hires and training them how to, how the Dearborn way does education. Uh, looking at some of the adjustments that happened this last year, um, as we go through our curriculum, uh, there's going to be a new math adoption that's going to be coming towards the end of this year for math, that's going to be a large purchase. Uh, we moved some money to the building and site, as you know, looking at our infrastructure, since we're so healthy, we're going to move some more money to building and site to help some of the infrastructure issues. One forty-seven A, it's a one-time amount we got from the state for retirement purposes, to help offset our retirement costs. One forty-seven C is money that the ORS gives us, that we in turn give right back to them. It inflates our numbers, but it doesn't really have any impact to us, that was roughly about two-point-nine million dollars. It comes in through state aid, so, you know, three weeks later, we pay it back out to the ORS. So it's just a way of the state funding money through the school system.
The ORS is Office of Retirement Services.
Correct.
I notice you keep throwing that out, but.
Yes, yes, Office of Retirement Services, yes, thank you. Uh, we had the early diagnostic grant, which was, uh, new this year, uh, for two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, that offsets our NWEA costs. Uh, special education funding, if you remember, probably back in the fall, as during the audit process, the district caught that we were actually inappropriately charging additional money to s- special education, which we get reimbursed from. We had to readjust that, so our revenue went down for the readjustment. Uh, Wayne Risa, as a part of the eighteen, Act eighteen local village for special education for center programs, they gave us a one-time additional allocation, because they have extra money in their fund balance to help offset transportation costs. The section three-one at-risk grant, that was a new grant that we got this year after probably eight or nine years of not having it. We were able to transfer some of our current costs into that risk grant. Back when we lost that risk grant, we actually transferred money, the general fund took on more costs at that time, so we kind of really bounced that off. Of course, it took ten years to do, but, you know, it was a savings to the general fund. Enhancement fund, we had roughly fifteen new positions for class size adjustments that we were able to push into the enhancement fund. And our worker conspecs are doing well, so we actually reduced that a little bit.
Can I mention with that, we have the best class size we've had in this district in like fifteen years, especially at the elementary level. Part of that is through the.
Were they large or small, or?
Smaller, smaller, reduced, the be- better, favorable to the students, yeah, ratios.
Good.
Great.
So looking at it more on a bigger picture side, you can see our general fund is our first column. We're going to bring in roughly two-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars in revenue, and we're going to go out with two-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars in expenditures, so we're going to have roughly a one-point-two million dollar surplus this year in the general fund. And some of those factors are with the enhancement money and at-risk funds, we are able to transfer funds into those other specialized funds for purposes that freed up general fund money. That's just a metric, but you can look in the very last column, for total expenditures, you know, we're a little over three-hundred million dollars in total expenditures for the entire district. That includes all our special revenue funds, our debt funds, and our capital project funds. Looking at, just to break down the general fund, general fund includes the, the actual general fund expenditures, enhancement funds, and athletic funds. That's what the total general fund is made up of, just kind of giving you a breakdown there. So you can see that in the enhancement fund, again, with the way we're doing it, we're collecting money one year, we're spending it the next year for cash flow purposes and to make sure we plan efficiently of how to use that funds. So there always will be a large fund balance in that year going forward. On the special revenue side, we have the funded projects, that's where our Title I grant, Title II grants, at-risk grant is in there. So any grants that have their own revenue and expenditures, they don't, they spend each other each year, so there is no fund balance in that one. Food service fund, you can see there's a large deficit this year, that's a planned deficit. Uh, last year, we spent money on Bryant, uh, Smith, and Stouts kitchens as part of running that fund balance down. Uh, it started last summer, so there was very little amount last year, but during the summer, which is this fiscal year, that money will still go down further, and we're also planning at Lowry, Maples, and Dearborn High additional kitchen renovations. So that's why you see a large deficit in the school service fund, it's planned. So school front, school service fund actually runs a large profit for us, that we actually charge indirect costs, so we have to take that money. We can't have more than three months in our fund balance, you'll see that we got a notice from the state again. Mr. Murphy and myself are preparing a plan to make sure they understand how we're spending it down, and it will be approved. They're, they're familiar with this kind of situation. Delta Ed is basically break-even, and the Act eighteen is where our center program, there is no fund balance in that one, we get reimbursed from the state and Wayne Risa for those expenditures. On the capital projects fund, you can see that we have a whole bunch of things scheduled, had the building and site committee, we'll go through more of those details. In the enhancement fund, you'll see the two-point-four million in expenditures, that includes the two million dollars set aside for the Dearborn High class expansion. And I'm going awfully quick, so.
Thank you.
And that's it. So we're good, so this is basically our starting point, so we use this as our base cost as we start looking at next year's, uh, budget process of, this is our base, and looking at what changes from here going forward. So in April, you'll have our first look of the three scenarios of most likely, best case and worst case, along with additional factors of student enrollment and staffing changes as we go forward.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next item, if, please.
Board of Education Business, uh, first item is acknowledgement of correspondence.
I think we all received some great thank you cards.
Oh, yeah, they're beautiful.
From?
Sicilina students.
Sicilina students and Woodmore Bowles students. So, thank you, that was very nice.
Yeah, they're great.
Trustee Thorpe?
Also received information regarding the upcoming M A S B Region Eight Board of Directors elections, physical letters and emails. I'm assuming we all got the same ones asking for your support.
Question about that, does that mean that the board has to, has to agree who they want to vote for? Or does each one of us vote?
Yeah, that's what it means, no.
In one person?
One, one vote.
When do we do that?
Will be upcoming probably another month or so.
Will we be notified?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And it'll be an agenda item as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Yes.
The Finance Committee and the Policy Committee met. We had a report on both. For the Finance Committee, I just want to note, there were two things that Mr. Wall did, maybe three, that he didn't mention in his presentation here. Those were that we're just discussing upgrading our food service and talking about different ways that, that could be done. And then whether we should or don't need to RFP banking services and audits. So, those will be ongoing discussions. Right now, it doesn't look like there's a burning need for either of those.
Thank you. Policy meet tonight?
They just.
We did the report.
They already did that.
We, we had a report.
Good. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Board Member or Superintendent Commentary?
Next item, please.
Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items?
Trustee Elaine?
Dr. Maliko, I know that there are a bunch of schools that have presentations like parent talk, and they'll let parents know about upcoming topics. One topic that I've had a couple of people talk to me about is how to discipline your student. So, I, I was thinking that's something, I know that the social workers in our schools could do presentations on that or other people, but I have heard people saying that they think that we should be doing some of that for parents.
For parents, okay, we'll look into that.
Anybody else? Next item, please.
Future Meeting Dates. Wednesday, February fourteenth, twenty eighteen, P through twelve, special meeting open at three PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchy Boardroom. Saturday, February seventeenth, twenty eighteen, and Sunday, February eighteenth, twenty eighteen. Yes, you heard, Saturday and Sunday. HFC Special Presidential Advisory Search Committee Meetings, starting at eight AM at the Dearborn Inn in the Fairlane Rough River Rooms. Monday, February nineteenth, twenty eighteen, HFC Special Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, six PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the President's Conference Room. Thursday, March first, twenty eighteen, P through twelve, Study Session, Open Meeting, High School Capacity Boundaries, Upon Board Approval, five PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchy Boardroom.
One thing I'd like to add is the seventeenth and eighteenth, when, when three board members will be involved in interviewing eight people for the presidency of the college or recommending people to the board for them to make a decision, all board members are invited to attend. The three people that have been assigned, Trustee Hussein, myself, and who's the third?
Trustee Thorpe.
Oh, you, Trustee Thorpe.
I thought I got my weekend back for a moment.
We have to participate, but any other board members are welcome, they just can't participate, but you can watch and listen to the, the presentations by the people, the candidates who are interested in this position.
Before you adjourn, Mr. Chair, Monday, February nineteenth, we did mention the committee meeting. We didn't mention a regular meeting for the college. It's not on here.
Monday, February nineteenth?
I'll just, I'll just read it, though. It should say, it should say, Monday, February nineteenth, twenty eighteen, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting at seven PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the President's Conference Room.
Good for you.
In the, not the President's Conference Room.
No, in the.
Andrew Mizer.
Yeah.
Andrew Mizer, yeah.
I was just lazy eyes, just read, okay, we don't have the.
The policy meeting is at six thirty instead of six that, that on the nineteenth.
At six thirty instead of six o'clock? You get that? Did you get the six thirty change? Ready? We are adjourned.
That was as close to nineties we can get.